Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization or group, and whether you're speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on that agenda nor plan for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business for our council meeting Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two is our consent agenda, sections one and two.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on any of the items on consent agenda? Anyone like to speak on any of the items on consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
We can now vote on these items. Item one A is approving a professional services agreement supplement number three for preliminary engineering services between the city and Alfred Vanish and Company for the Adams Street from Thirty-Sixth Street to Forty-Ninth Street Rehab Project introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one B is approving the professional services agreement supplement number one for environmental services between the city of Lincoln and Olson, Inc. for the Adams Street from Thirty-Sixth Street to Forty-Ninth Street Rehab Project introduced by Ward.
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one C is approving the professional services agreement between the city of Lincoln and Felsberg Holt Ulevig, Inc. for environmental services for the Ninth and Tenth A and D Intersections Traffic Signal Project introduced by Ward.
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one D is approving the professional services agreement between the city of Lincoln and Felsberg Holt Ulevig, Inc. for preliminary engineering services for the Ninth and Tenth and A and D Intersections Traffic Signal Project introduced by Ward.
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call, may we please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Items two A through two C was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Okay, that concludes our consent agenda. We can move on to section four of public hearing resolutions. I'll be calling item four A. Miscellaneous two-two-zero-zero-one, application of the Urban Development Director to declare the Bishop Heights Shopping Center Environs redevelopment area as blighted and substandard on the property generally located at Twenty-seventh Street and Highway Two.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, five-five-five South Tenth Street. I got a map here, so we'll see if that can come up. So this is the area, this would be, Highway Two is, is down here. This is Twenty-seventh Street, basically encircles all of the development at Twenty-seventh and Highway Two, and then includes the old drive-through bank that's on the north side of Woods Boulevard. This is a picture of the bank that's being propos, that is within the blight area. The Wells Fargo Bank is also in the blight area, and it is not part of this particular project. That's back where Jack Shack's was, if people were familiar with Jack Shack. There was a grocery store and a hardware store here, and Valentinos and a number of other shops have tried to be there, that's the ShopCo. Then at the end, there was another bank, was a Northwest Bank. So that kind of gives you a little lay of the land of the area that we're talking about. Highly visible, I think most people in Lincoln have probably driven by this site one time or another. The person that did the blight study, Tim Kealan, could not be here, he did send a letter, so I will read that in so that we understand the determination of blight from his perspective. He did this study in two thousand and nineteen, we asked him to refresh and send a letter back to us to confirm that the area had still remained blighted. In response, he said, "In general, no physical improvements and/or redevelopment efforts have occurred within the redevelopment area since the completion of the study. Thus, no change to our blight or substandard findings in two thousand and nineteen." Important to note, the study documented six structures, of which four were determined to have minor to major deterioration, and the age of all the structures was over forty years. These conditions still exist with the opinion that the overall physical condition of the area has worsened since the completion of the December two thousand and nineteen study. Note the attached pictures, which I just shared with you, of the current conditions. It's the opinion of Hannah Kealan, that the number, degree and distribution of blight and substandard factors as documented in the December two thousand and nineteen study still exists today, and thus, the Bishop Heights Shopping Center Environs Redevelopment Area warrants being officially declared blighted and substandard by the city of Lincoln and the city council. We took these findings to the Planning Commission a month ago or so, and they unanimously approved this blight designation for this particular area. Little history on this site, this area was, long ago was a treasure city, there was a treasure city up on like Forty-eighth and Leighton at one time, there might have been two of those. Then it became a ShopCo. ShopCo declared bankruptcy in two thousand and nineteen, and that basically put the center in jeopardy because they didn't have a major anchor tenant for this particular site. Again, the things that we talked to Mr. Kealan about, it's got deteriorated and dilapidated structures, the ages of structures qualify it for being blighted, it's vacant and functionally and economically obsolete structures. These were all in the findings that are before you. The drive-through bank, there has been some discussion about the drive-through bank and the location and the inclusion of this home, which the developer has purchased a home on Cuchara and included this within the blight area. Generally, they don't go structure by structure on blight, they use averages. So this certainly is appropriate to be able to include that area within the blight air, blight designated area. And the purpose of that is to allow for a more efficient parking up in that area. These would be discussions that we would all bring back to you at some point when we have a plan amendment to this, and at a future point when we have a redevelopment agreement to discuss, to discuss how we would mitigate, as we did when we did Tabitha. So if you'll remember, we just recently brought Tabitha through, had concerns from neighbors about water runoff, and also had concerns about landscaping, and those issues were ultimately addressed in the redevelopment agreement. Some of the purposes that they've identified for this would be apartments that would go up in this area, possibly some small restaurants or small shops, and then an office building. We think that that's consistent with the comprehensive plan, especially as it relates to apartments. As you'll remember, the comprehensive plan is trying to find, for each, to find one housing unit being built in the current environment, current city limits on a one-to-four ratio, so that twenty-five percent of the future growth within the city will be confined within that. This, if this comes forward with an apartment, which is what they're proposing, would accomplish those goals. We saw something like that over at Cotner and P., that was our infill redevelopment project, which I think has been very successful. There were some concerns by the developer or by the neighbors in regards to traffic in this area. Traffic volumes, there's been a traffic study, and Olson has concluded that there's probably less traffic under this proposal than the proposal that was existing with the ShopCo and the, and the grocery store. I think I can stop there. I will also say that the two properties that are not likely to be redeveloped would be an Arby's that's down here, and the Wells Fargo Building that's up in this location. But, you know, it remains to be seen what, what happens. I think Arby's is probably going to remodel their building. I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Director Marvin? Councilman McGinnis?
I got one, I'm, I was trying to find your map. Okay, I got a question, maybe you could probably answer this pretty quick. In this blighted area, is that considered the same as a redevelopment area? Would it be? I mean...
Well, we would have, it will be the, it will be the redevelopment area, but we wouldn't, when we do a plan amendment and show the places where tax increment financing could be spent, it can be spent outside that area.
Outside the blighted area?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Generally, the places that we can expend money would be in public right-of-way areas that run up and down Twenty-seventh Street, and on the public walkways, and the areas in the back along the bike, the bike trail.
Any further questions for Director Marvin? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much, Director. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on item four A? Anyone else like to speak on item four A? Mr. Seacrest?
Good afternoon, Kent Seacrest, eleven-twenty-eight Lincoln Mall. I'm here along with Aaron Bright from Olson, if there's any questions of our team. We represent three different redevelopers that are working hand-in-hand, trying to make a successful retail mixed-use development. Red Development is one of our clients. Red Development is, has done the successful South Point area, and recently the Shields. We also have EPC, who does high-quality apartments, and they're based in Kansas City. And White Development, Tom and Zach White, residents of Lincoln, who have, over their years, developed about five thousand acres of Lincoln properties, into homes and residences and high offices and apartment projects. We've had two different Zoom calls with the buddy neighbors, and then we had a good Zoom call with the Country Club Neighborhood Association, trying to answer their questions. And while this is blight, I do know that everybody's curious. I saw this at Planning Commission, so if you would bear with me, I'll just run through some highlights we have not formally submitted, so what I'm showing you is subject to change. COVID and post-pandemic has been super hard to get people to understand what the world's going to look like and what needs to happen. So that's one of our reasons why we're not up to speed on everything we wish we were. Dan did a good job of summarizing the traffic, I don't know if this will show today. But basically, we are... The first column is just saying what was there before when it was full. The second column, or the third column is showing you what's going to go under our proposal. And you will see that on the PM, which is the nasty time of day, the rush hour traffic at night, we will be dropping our trips by about seventeen percent. And similarly, the all-day trips drop about seven percent. So that, we think, is good. Here's just a quick indication of the three redevelopers and the site plans and what they're doing in different sections. The white has basically the upper part.
Can you turn it out just a little, please?
That, shown better. Which is the, that old bank building and the house. And then EPC, the apartment people are kind of in the middle. And then Red will finish out the southern end with retail services, restaurants and things of that nature. We basically have shown this plan to the neighborhood. It could change slightly, but we think it's getting closer. You can just see different, the bike trail, and then we're taking the bike trail through our development here, and having shops and retail and restaurants be on the connector piece of the bike trail as we go forward. EPC, this is basically their apartment plan. And these are just similar type of projects they've done in other communities, which, again, they're just some of the nicer-looking facilities. And then White Development is either talking one big building, which would be about three stories at the southern end, or two smaller buildings, which are two-story at the Make It Happen. And as Dan pointed out, the residential house has been acquired. Reason we think that's important to include in this is it's corner, it gets the lot to be cornered in a more logical shape, so we don't have to work around that. The property already is a neighbor to Cuchara, and we have what I call ability with the topography to, here is the Cuchara piece, and then there'd be a retaining wall eight to ten feet, and the parking lot. And as a result of all that, with the, by the time we landscape, nobody gets to see any cars up and down Cuchara. And, and then heavily buffer the east boundary from the house that will be there. Their garage is there, and so we also do the extra buffering along that way as well. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Again, we ask your patience to allow us to finalize the details, and we will continue to share that data, not only with you, but equally important to neighbors. With that, be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Seacrest? Councilman Washington?
Good afternoon, Mr. Seacrest, thank you for coming down, and thank you for providing those sketches, the photos of the Cuchara lot. Would you mind showing the cutaway again? That shows the elevation difference? And I know that we're talking about blight, we're not talking about your P U D or your whatever, but I just wanted to see that. So where the, where the wall would be, you're saying the upper part, the higher, is Cuchara?
Yes.
And there was a house there, like, in this drawing, and that was removed?
Correct.
All right, and so you have the wall and the landscaping, thank you. And then my other question had to do with, I guess, the public inter, public comment, public meetings or whatever you've had with neighbors during COVID, so I know that there was a challenge. But can you tell me what the, if you spoke with the residents of Bishop Heights, or Bishop Square, and what were their opinions about this project?
They were invited to participate on the calls, I know we had some of the neighbors from Bishop Square. I, we had a letter from an attorney that lives in Bishop Square. What I felt, but I don't want to try to speak on their behalf, is traffic. Twenty-seventh's rather busy street, it's three-lane, it's, as long as I practice law within the community, well, the Transportation Department has wished it was wider, and for forty years, that's been a debate, and it came to a head, and I think it was the eighties, and maybe it was the nineties, and... and the community said no, and the council said no, and we don't even discuss it anymore. And again, our developers support the three-lane, but it has too much capacity. The good news, I think, if there is good news, is one, we're less traffic than was historically there. Number two, there still will be a light at Woods Boulevard, and that's probably the game-changer for a lot of those residents to get on and off the street, because it stops the traffic at 27th, creates gaps for them to make their right and left turn more safely along the way. But the third leg of this discussion that I'm really excited about is something called the South Beltway. It opens next year. And what we're seeing, I talked to the city transportation manager, and basically, 1,900 trips are going up and down Highway 2 today. Trucks, the big trucks. And he is, he doesn't know for sure, because the Beltway hasn't opened up. He guesstimates or speculates that about one-third to half of the trucks on Highway 2 will be shifting. And that's, you know, if you've driven Highway 2, the trucks don't go very fast, particularly at red lights. So everybody passes, and it causes Highway 2 at times to feel like it's only got one lane instead of two lanes in each direction. So I'm hopeful, and I think he is too, that this will help the Highway 2 traffic. Anytime we help the Highway 2 traffic, it creates the possibility that the other streets, be it 14th, or 27th, or 40th, or 56th, or 70th, will get more green time. But again, they haven't figured that out, because they don't know what's happening.
All right.
But that should be the third factor that will hopefully continue to make 27th tolerable. And I want to say tolerable, because I know it's not ideal.
And if you don't mind, I have one last question about your interactions with neighbors. And that's the east side. So I realize there's a bike trail there, but it's also a residential neighborhood there. And since the way that you showed the future potential layout, the apartment buildings would be there mostly on the east. And I was just wondering if you'd had a chance to talk to those neighbors?
Yes. We invited the magic distance, plus we contacted that neighborhood association over on the east side. One of the good factors, if there is good factors, is the bike trail itself is very wide.
Okay.
So they are set back more than other traditional neighborhoods are. There's also good tree massing along there that I think make it tolerable, from their point of view. I've not heard a lot from that neighborhood, but when we have data, we will be sharing it with that neighborhood, just like we do the others.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Are there any questions for, any other questions for Mr. Kent, or Mr. Seacrest?
I like Mr. Kent.
All right, seeing none. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Anyone else that would like to speak on item 4A? Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and move on to item 4B.
Item 4B is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for February 16 through February 28, 2022.
Hello, council members. My name is Robert Marsh. I live at 9,700 West Bluff Road, Malcolm. And on February 18th, I went to play golf at Pioneer's Golf Course, and I come back to my car, and there was a golf ball dent in it. And I'm going to try and prove to you why today. This is a parking lot. I don't know if you're all familiar with, there's four municipal golf courses in Lincoln, and two of them have nets. Third one really needs one, but two of them have nets. This is the park, let's see. Jeez, how can you make that bigger? Can I make that bigger?
Yes.
I've seen... Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Oh, Zoom, okay. I got you.
How far do you want?
That's good. That's good.
Is that good?
This parking lot's approximately about 150 yards long, and my truck is parked at the end. It's right there at the very end, if you can see it. Anyway, just to illustrate, it's not very long, and it's right next to the driving range, which is the only one that's next to the driving range, municipal golf course. Hazardous, really hazardous. This better illustrates the place I was parked. The white pickup is where I was actually parked, and you can't see these, there's golf balls laying out here. There's one there. There's one there. I didn't drop them out there either. And there's one there, and one there. These fly over the net, and they fly underneath the net, and I'll show you why that is, too. Here's the dent that actually was put in the, if you're getting that wrong. It was put in the side of my pickup. It was pretty pronounced, and it stretched to the point where the dent people said it's too deep. They can't fix it. It has to be done by a body shop. The dent people are a lot cheaper, and it's more efficient, but that ain't going to work. This shows the, kind of the stretch of the, and this is only about 18 inches, two feet from the door where I put my clubs in. I don't know, can you imagine getting hit by a golf ball, put a stretched metal like that? It's a hazardous thing, and I think it's kind of a wake-up call for Lincoln Parks and Rec to get this right. Here is, this is Mahoney Golf Course. They did a real good job with this net. This, there's two parts here. There's an upper and a lower, and it goes all the way to the bottom. And it actually goes around the back here and protects number five tee box. And this is Adams Street between about 80th and 82nd in Adams, right along here. And they did a really good job there. Here's another picture, just to emphasize. And there's a chain-link fence there, too, but they don't stop much. This is Pioneer's. They got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. They got about nine poles there, and if you notice, they're shorter than, I'm going to say, I don't, I didn't get up there and measure them. I'm going to say five to seven feet. Okay, here's the reason why my truck got hit. Pioneer's fence doesn't go all the way to the bottom. And there's a chain-link fence there, but there's like three strands of barbed wire that this golf ball can go through at a high rate of speed. And you can see how much, that barbed wire isn't going to stop much, and that's all the farther down that goes. They should probably go all the way to the bottom like Mahoney did, to protect everybody and everyone and all the cars and people. The attendant that I went up there to see at Pioneer said it's not uncommon to see a golf ball bouncing out in the parking lot. He said it happens all the time. And I'm thinking that, you know, if somebody gets hit with one of these, it can't be good. And there's another illustration. You can see the guy on the tee box. That's about 150 yards, and this is where my truck was parked, looking back towards the driving range and the tee box. And there's golf balls scattered all along here. It doesn't, you know, it's about 75% protection, but the 25% tells me Murphy's Law, they're going to get through and hurt somebody, and evidently, they only got my truck. And so, you know, I tried the cheap route with the dent people, and this is what Gracie's Body Shop came up with. And it's, I think it's, you know, I wish it was cheaper, but it's a 2019. It's got about 30,000 miles on it. It's got all the bells and whistles. And it's a nice truck. It's the nicest truck I've ever owned. And if anybody's going to put scratches and marks and dents in it, I think I'd kind of like to do it myself. But when you come back to the, after enjoying a game of golf, and you got this dent in your truck, it just kind of ruined my day. But that's my story, and I guess I'm through.
We'll see if the council has any questions for you. Councilman Raybold, do you have a question for Mr. Marsh?
Mr. Marsh, has the truck been fixed already?
No.
No.
No, I just washed it today, and I got, it made me sicker.
And do you have insurance for things like this?
Yeah, I do have insurance, and it's $1,000 deductible.
So if you did get it fixed, then you would be responsible for the $1,000 deductible?
Yeah, that's right. But you know, if this was done correctly in the first place, we wouldn't, I wouldn't be here. And if these poles, you know, they have enough land out at Pioneer's. They could move this golf course east. There used to be 27 holes out there. Now there's 18. There's plenty of land out there to move this driving range east and get it away from the parking lot. It's the only golf course with a parking lot next to the driving range, which is not good, and somebody's going to get injured eventually.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Marsh? Okay. We'll have you have a seat, and then we'll see if the council has any questions for any city staff. Are there any council members who has a question for city staff?
Is the Parks Department, oh, yes, I would have one question.
Good afternoon. Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks and Recreation.
Hi, Director Johnson. I just have a question about golf ball accidents at public courses. And Mr. Marsh had noted that he felt that there was about 75% protection from the driving range to the parking lot. And I'm just curious, is there a policy at Parks and Rec to provide a certain amount of protection? What do the other golf courses do?
Yeah, good question. Typically, our standard is, and I think the industry standard, is that it is the person hitting the golf ball who's responsible for any damage that is caused by that golf ball. And in this instance, it's probably pretty difficult to identify who is actually hitting that ball at the driving range. The claimant is correct that we do have nets at two of our golf courses. The net here is 236 feet long by 30 feet high. It was installed in 2014, and I think it's been, it's aversion, I don't know how many times it's been installed ahead of that. This is the first claim that I'm aware of in at least that period of time, of a golf ball leaving the driving range, hitting a vehicle in the parking lot, and a claim being filed. That's not to say that it hasn't happened before, but to my knowledge, this is the first time that we've had this type of claim. The net at Mahoney Golf Course is taller, and the intent of that net is obviously to protect Adams Street as an arterial street in the city. So obviously, the concern is that if a net, if a ball cleared that net, then it's potentially going to hit a moving vehicle. And I think that that's why that net is taller than the net at Pioneer's.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions for Director Johnson? I think Councilman Washington got all the questions that I had, so thank you. Any other questions for any other city staff? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Marsh, would you like to provide a rebuttal?
I don't think I have anything to add.
Okay. Yep. All right. So we had a hearing about Mr. Marsh's claim, so now we'll see if, is there anyone else here that would like to speak on any of the other claims?
Hello, my name is Olga Lennox. I'm at Ruth Park Drive in Lincoln City, in Lincoln. I have a problem. I had a slip on the...
I need to the microphone a bit more. We're having trouble hearing.
I had a problem on one of your city buses. I had fell, and during the fall, the driver did not stop, did not help me up. I am disabled. I tried to contact Lincoln's public buses a couple of times, no answer from no one. So I just wanted to know, and I keep asking this question, what are the procedures of someone falling and hurting themselves on a city bus and not getting any kind of response to the passenger? I don't have any kind of information on it, because I just received my papers to come here to grieve this issue.
Okay. Are there any other, are there any questions for, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Olga Lennox.
Olga, okay. Are there any questions? Councilwoman Raybold?
Ms. Lennox, could you tell us a little bit about it? I'm not quite clear on what happened. You fell in the bus, and no one came to your aid, or did they stop the bus? Could you tell us?
Yes. No one came to my aid, period. No one, except for another passenger, which I couldn't speak, because I'm laying on the floor on the bus. No one, you know, the bus driver, that's his responsibility to at least stop the bus, to see if I'm okay, to ask me if I'm okay, to even help me get up off the floor. None of the above was done by the bus driver. I've worked as a bus driver before, and I know what the protocol is. I don't know about Lincoln, but I do know they're all about the same. So as I was getting ready to get off the bus, preparing to get off the bus, this bus is Route 27, as he's making his turn on 20, no, 33rd and Folkways, I'm preparing myself to get up out of the seat. As I'm trying to put my backpack on, as he's turning, I lose my balance, and I fall on the floor. So all of this right side is hitting the floor, and then I'm sliding across the floor. Nobody's saying anything. Like I said, he did not stop the bus. He didn't acknowledge me that I'm laying on the floor. And when I go up there to say, "Did you see me laying on the floor?", he just looks at me and says, "Do you need help?" By that time, no, I'm already frustrated. Why am I going to stand here for another hour to wait on someone else? So that was my issue with your Lincoln Bus Company.
And I noticed in your claim, you have an unspecified amount. Could you tell us more of the injuries that you sustained?
Yes.
And any medical treatment?
I did a medical, I went to my doctor. I did not go to, she requested me to go to my chiropractor, not chiropractor, but my physical therapist, which already had back issues. I couldn't get in because I couldn't get up. That was my issue. I have back issues. And I have two hip replacements, and I thought I had cracked the right hip because I fell on that hip. I had a bruise here, and then I had a bruise on my left shoulder, right shoulder. So I was pretty banged up, and that's all, the doctors I went to was my, not my primary care physician, but I went to the emergency, the two days later. And those were all the medical people I saw.
And the treatment that you received for the injury was?
For the injury for the hip, she did x-ray. They did not find anything. The treatment for my shoulder, nothing. I just ate at home, because it was just a bruise. And the other things, I just, she just told me to take some Tylenol or something. She wanted to issue pain medications, which I don't take. I can't tolerate them. So I just took over-the-counter pain aids.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Lennox, thank you for being here today. I would like to hear from Director Elliott, if she could come forward, please. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lennox, again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Elliott. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, Liz Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities.
Thank you for coming forward. Are you aware of this case? And could you just comment, please, on the status, if you would?
Definitely. Unfortunately, I'm not aware of this claim, so I'm going to have to go back and look. Typically, our policy is, situations like this, unfortunately, we're in a difficult situation, our operators are, because we can't actually, one, leave our bus unattended and get out of the seats, so they are supposed to remain in their seats. The other concern that we have is, obviously, we don't want to maneuver and move people that could exacerbate some injury or those issues. And obviously, some individuals just would prefer that we not touch them at all. So the policy generally is not to physically help someone up off the ground. However, our bus operator, assuming the facts that we've been given here today, our bus operators obviously should have stopped and checked, seen if there was a need for medical assistance to be called out to the scenes, and then handled that accordingly, or at least reached out to a dispatcher who could then reach out to the medical professionals that are needed. In this case, I'm not sure what happened. I, we could easily go back and look at video and the reports from that day. We do document. The other concern could be, I don't know how busy this bus was. Sometimes, the buses are... Sometimes the buses are crowded enough that you don't see individuals fall, and so it may not have been something that came to the attention of the operator. It just depends. And without having an opportunity to look at it, I just couldn't tell you what happened in this case. So I'd be more than happy to go back and investigate what happened to see and, one, figure out why no one would have responded to Ms. Lennox. I did not receive any messages, so I'm not sure where they may have gone. But we're happy to do some more investigation and look into it.
Thank you for offering that. I think that would be appropriate and helpful in this case, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. We will do that if we continue it.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Any other questions for Director Elliott? Councilwoman Raybald?
Well, actually, for city law.
Hey, I want to say, any other questions for Director Elliott?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Christie? Councilwoman Raybald?
Mr. Christie, could you tell us a little bit about why the city denied the claim?
Johancy Christie, city attorney. I will, what I can tell you is that I did not know that this, obviously, it was on the list of denial. We usually get notices if someone was coming. So I did not know that Ms. Lennox was coming here today, and I apologize for that. Well, given the fact that she, given the fact that Director Elliott offered to investigate, and given the fact that I just completely honest did not know that she was coming today, we usually get notices, I would ask that if it is continued, I will provide additional information from the law department's perspective.
Thank you very much. That's great.
Any other questions for Mr. Christie? Okay, seeing none. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Does the council have any other questions for city staff? Okay. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on Ms. Lennox's claim? Seeing none. Ms. Lennox, would you like to provide a rebuttal?
No, I just wanted to say thank you because nobody acknowledges, just like you see right here now. This is what I'm going through. And I figure that they're not acknowledging me as a passenger. I just want it to be acknowledged and taken care of.
Thank you so much. Okay. Is there, so we had those two claims. We're going to move on. Is there any other, is there anyone else that would like to speak on these items? Or item 4C? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
I'll be calling item 4C, approving fast-forward funds for the construction of a maintenance and modification hangar at Duncan Aviation.
Councilwoman Ward, would you like to open on your resolution?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a complicated, long issue, so please bear with me and stick with me. I have some opening comments, and then we will hear from others as we proceed through the public hearing portion of this. So thank you. In October of last year, 2021, I began meeting with Duncan Aviation executives. And at the time, the mayor's economic development senior aide, Kate Bowles, regarding Duncan's request for fast-forward funds for expansion of their new project. I've been honored to keep working closely with my colleagues, Duncan, over the last almost six months leading up to today. Last December, Duncan began their outreach to the city council members to meet and talk about their expansion and offered tours to their facility. Some of us began meeting as early as right after the New Year's holiday out at Duncan. So just a bit more about why I support this request and why I'm happy to bring this forward. Duncan Aviation is the largest privately-owned business jet service provider in the world, not just in the country, but in the world. With complete maintenance, repair, and overhaul, MRO, service offerings at three United States facilities, strategically-placed regional shops, and mobile technical teams able to provide services worldwide, Duncan helps business aircraft operators get the most value from their aircraft ownership. Duncan Aviation is planning to build a new business aircraft maintenance and modifications hangar. Last fall, when I began my meetings with them, they were considering expansion in either Battle Creek, Michigan, one of their three locations, or here in Lincoln, Nebraska. This is a $36.6 million project to our city, $36.6 million. Duncan works in partnership with companies such as Honeywell, Collins Aerospace, Universal Aviation, and also regularly works with the United States government and military as a contractor. Their customer base exists primarily outside of the state of Nebraska. 15% to 20% of Duncan's annual revenue is captured by servicing business jets, which are based outside of the United States, typically Canada, Europe, and South America. These customers provide revenue to Lincoln through the purchase of hotel rooms, restaurant meals, rental cars, and tourism. The estimated annual income from Duncan customers to our Lincoln hospitality industry is approximately $20,000 every year. With this expansion, Duncan anticipates creating 60 to 70 full-time jobs at an average total package of $70,000 or more per employee. So now, some background about the fast-forward funds. This was an education process for me as well. The fund was created when there was a surplus in 2008 and 2009 in certain special assessment funds. The fund was designed to provide priority for economic development and/or infrastructure projects, especially in cases where there is a demonstrated benefit to our community and/or where an incentive can positively influence the outcome of a project. So let's do talk about the dollars and the numbers. It has been my intent and my goal from the beginning of undertaking this conversation and this project to have my colleagues on the city council decide and be comfortable with this request. I have had repeated conversations with each of them since last fall into last week into this morning, and five of the seven of us have supported this request. And again, Duncan has reached out to meet with us and offer tours to explain their expansion to all of the council. They have done their due diligence. Undoubtedly, the amount of $3.35 million is not without giving us pause. I fully recognize, all of my colleagues and others in the community recognize, and above all, Duncan Aviation recognizes this request is the largest single amount requested of these funds to date. But here's what I would say to this. The original fund began in 2008 and 2009 with $6 million. We have awarded approximately $1 million over 14 years. $1 million in the last 14 years since the fund was created. No request has been made since 2018. The current balance is just over $5 million. $1.7 million would remain if this request is approved. So once more, $1 million has been requested since the fast-forward inception in 2008 and 2009. It makes sense to me and the majority of my colleagues that we utilize these funds. Duncan's request of $3.35 million is approximately less than one-half of their costs required for infrastructure improvements for the new hangar development, which again, is on public-owned property. As we all know, the cost of materials and construction is rising every day. I want to also remind the council and to our audience and anybody watching or listening that the $3.35 million represents 10% of this $36.6 million project. And we still have the expansion in Lincoln, Nebraska, and it's not going to Battle Creek, Michigan. Duncan will be covering the other 90% of their costs, which also will include $885,000 stormwater drainage improvement that either the city or the Lincoln Airport Authority would have to invest in to bring this site up to city code. The city will own these new buildings, parking lots, and again, our community will benefit from the 60 to 70 new jobs which will be created as a result of this expansion. And again, these are full-time jobs earning $70,000 or more annually. The council has had discussions about replenishing the fast-forward funds. I would wholeheartedly support this and help find that path forward if there is support to do so. Mr. Kramer Lyons is here. He's the vice president and associate general counsel for Duncan Aviation, and he'll get into some more specifics. I just want to offer a few more facts before we do that. Just as a reminder, Duncan employs 1,400 people here in Lincoln. These are mostly full-time, good-paying jobs with benefits. Their expansion includes the construction of a maintenance and modifications hangar of approximately 45,000 square feet of hangar space and approximately 62,000 square feet in support space. They anticipate, again, creating 60, 70 full-time jobs. And it's my understanding that even in, with this tight job market, Duncan is confident with their ongoing outreach programs and targeting high school and community college students through their apprentice programs. They will fill their new positions. And I also understand they recently just had their largest new employee orientation class in Lincoln recently with 42 new team members that they have added. Duncan has strongly demonstrated their eligibility for fast-forward funds by first showing that they will be adding all these new employees as a result of this expansion, which is a wage requirement of 120% of the county average wage or greater, and secondly, deriving 50% or more of their revenue from outside this county. I, for one, am very grateful Duncan Aviation chose to expand in Lincoln and not in Battle Creek, one of their other nice locations. And I want to thank Duncan for their outreach and their transparency with the city council and the many questions they have continued to answer. And I want to thank the city law department, the city attorney, but specifically Tim C., who has worked through this very important issue. I respectfully ask my colleagues to consider and continue their support of this request. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I believe Mr. Lyons will be up next. Thank you all.
Good afternoon. Kramer Lyons, vice president, associate general counsel at Duncan Aviation, 3701 Aviation Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. Councilwoman Ward, thank you so much. We greatly appreciate the effort and the initiative that you've kind of led this through on the city council's side. And thank you to all of you for engaging with us in this discussion and coming out to our facility and sending us the questions and being willing to listen as we expand here in Lincoln. Mike Minchow, our COO, who has been leading the charge for our expansion here in Lincoln, he sends his regrets, unfortunately, at travel conflict that he's been scheduled for a long time. Wasn't, he wasn't able to move it. He wishes he could be here tonight to answer questions as well. I also want to thank Kate Bowles in the mayor's office. They were the ones that kind of got us on track for the fast-forward funds and get this thing off the ground, so I want to send an appreciation to them. So Councilwoman Ward gave us a general overview of our project. I want to bring up some pictures here and kind of do a high level of what we're looking So we're calling this the Hangar I Expansion Project. In 2015 and 16, we built two hangars that look very similar to this and actually about this property. And we call those G and H. So we're just going to follow down. This is Hangar I. This is looking at the property towards North Park Road, looking west. You can see the fence here, and then there's a ramp, airport space ramp there. This is looking at the same building just from the other side, from North Park Road, looking back to the east. As you'll see, here, I'll pull this back. There's big hangar doors here, and then on the other side, there's a hangar door as well. This helps us load airplanes in from both sides of the hangars. With the size of the aircraft, which I'll get to in a second, this helps us maximize the space that we are able to get as many aircraft into the hangars as possible. The more aircraft we have, the more people working on airplanes, the better it is for us. And so that's why we have that. This is what the property will look like. So you see G and H here, this is I, and these are, I'll show you on the next one, but all this concrete has to be added in. This is public ramp space here. This parking lot, which we'll go through in just a second, is all going to have to be redone. There are stormwater culverts here that are going to have to be rerouted with the stormwater drainage issue that Councilwoman Ward mentioned earlier. This right here is an interesting, this is a fuel farm, so we have fuel here, and other users on the airport can have access to this fuel, and we share that space. And then this is G and H again, just to orient yourselves. This concrete that's gray is existing ramp space, Lincoln Airport Authority ramp space, if anyone can pull their airplanes up on this space. This lighter area here is the rendering of what it's going to look like. As you can see, is the parking lot expansion in the back. North Park Road runs along this side of the property. So the why, these airplanes are getting big, and they're in high demand right now. So Bombardier is a Canadian jet manufacturer. They make a Global 7500, and it's almost as big as the regional airlines that you're seeing over at the airport. But they seat maybe 10, 12 to 15 people. Big Fortune 500 companies are operating these. Duncan serves 60 of the top Fortune 100 companies in the United States. Gulfstream announced a G-700. They've also announced a G-800 and a G-400. These airplanes are, and then Deuxseau Falcon made a 10X. It's a French company. Gulfstream's headquartered in Savannah, Georgia. And so with our industry, it's kind of nice. We can tell, we kind of know how busy we're going to be over the next 10 years. These airplanes have maintenance interval schedules. No matter how much they're flying, they have to come in for service after so many months. And so in 2021, you'll see these ultra-large aircraft, the pictures I just showed you, 478. Duncan owns about 12% of that market share. We did about 60 inspections, maintenance events inspections last year. But you can see in 2029 and 2030, we're seeing a 300 event jump. And in order for us to even maintain our market share, we have to expand our space. We are totally out of space. If we want to increase our market share, which we do, we have to increase space. And so this hangar is the next step of our development plan, but it's definitely not the last. You'll see as well, large aircraft, another 100 over the next eight years inspections. And so somebody has to build hangar space to be able to take this capacity that the market is showing here. All right. And so then now we can get into some of the infrastructure stuff, which is tied to our fast-forward fund application. So this is done in four phases. The first phase here is to develop and design, to build kind of a new space over here. This is going to be under a lease with the Airport Authority. We'll lease it from them, pay rent. Phase two down here, add some additional parking lot and an additional entryway into the property from North Park Road. So currently, you would enter in right here. This is going to go away, and you'll enter in just a little bit farther south. Phase three up here, going to remove a lot of our existing property, get this site work ready for the new hangar space. This will be permanent where it'll eventually end up, so they'll start with that. And then eventually, phase four is the addition of the building. With that, though, as Councilwoman Ward mentioned, there's significant infrastructure improvements that need to be made. The stormwater drainage I mentioned, there's the parking lot, obviously. There's a lot of underground utilities that need to be moved, site lighting, security fencing, that all benefit us, but also the Airport Authority and the other users of the airport. So some of the public benefits that we see that this is going to give, once we get done with this, in the short term, I think our rent increase to the Airport Authority will increase by $110,000. In the long term, it'll be much, much more than that. So what happens is, we build it, we expend the capital, then we lease it from the Airport Authority. That goes with the buildings, that goes with the land. After a while, we have to start paying fair market rent. So we get a tenant improvement cut on rent, but then after a while, we have to start paying fair market rent. So on a, Councilwoman Ward said $36.6 million. It's now over 40 with construction costs that have gone up. With a $40 million project, that rent's going to be expensive here in the long term. Same with G and H that we just built five, six years ago. Same with our other hangars that are on here. These are going to, these are all starting to get close to fair market rent. And that rent that we pay to the Airport Authority, that helps them provide their commercial air service and helps them with their operating budget as well. Our restaurants and hotels was also mentioned in the introduction. Most of our airplanes are in our hangar, which right now in Lincoln, we have about 70. Most of our airplanes... Most of our airplanes are accompanied by at least one person, if not two at all, most of the time while they're here, Monday through Friday. These people, a lot of times their titles are Directors of Maintenance. They are people that are hired to make sure that this aircraft receives all the proper FAA maintenance, or if it's coming from overseas, the aviation authorities of the other, the other countries. Those people stay here between two weeks to six, eight months of the year while their airplane's here. We think, we estimate that our customers are directly responsible for just under 6,000 hotel rooms a year and just over 14,000 meals a year. And those are oftentimes kind of off nights, Monday through Thursday nights, that our customers are staying in our Lincoln hotels. And as also has been mentioned, 60 new jobs, 60, 70 new jobs with an average pay of at least $70,000. Last month, this was mentioned, we added 42 new team members to Lincoln with approximately 35 of those team members being permanent Lincoln location jobs. This month, I just checked, we had orientation going on as I speak, and we added 25 this month. And, and almost, I think, 22 or 23 of those people will be permanent Lincoln jobs. Though the job market's been tough, it was a question that we've gotten a lot of times, even with our own team members. Why are we building a new hangar when we have, you know, when we're under short staffed? And we have, we have a recruiter in Lincoln that's full-time staff. We have a recruiter in Provo, Utah, and Battle Creek, Michigan. And as of late, you know, we've done some, some significant market adjustments with our salaries and our pays. We've had some good luck, and so we're, we're hopeful that that continues. And then many of these individuals, many, many of our team members are coming from military or aviation colleges, which are not, a lot of times not native Nebraskans. So we're bringing in a lot of people that are not native Nebraskans. And, and our data shows that about, for every two new team members we bring in, they bring at least one other person. So one of their, one of them, their partner or their spouse is coming with them looking for jobs. I will say that the Lincoln Airport Authority, at some point, and I'm not exactly sure the time, but when we started working with Kate Bowles in the mayor's office and Councilwoman Ward on the, on the fast-forward funds, the Airport Authority did commit $500,000 to this project as well. And theirs is tied directly to the stormwater. The stormwater part of this, which I'll show in a second, they in the past have done significantly more than that. They've paid for the entire ramp space. Multi-million dollar contributions from them in the past. However, with their terminal expansion project and with their, their dedication to the commercial air service, unfortunately, this year, the funds were just not there for that, to, to make a bigger commitment. With the amount of, the amount of the requests, we do recognize that this is a large sum of money. This is the largest request that's ever been made. However, we believe that this is exactly the type of project that the fast-forward funds was designed to do and designed to facilitate. Duncan's been a staple in the Lincoln economy for 50, actually, this year's our 66th year. First, I think we moved two years, 64 years, 63 years we've been in Lincoln. We have 1,400 employees total, and this year alone, we welcomed 130 team members to our Silver Wings Club, which means they've been with us for 25 years. So 130 people have been with us for 25 years, and next year is going to be at least that number. As Councilwoman Ward mentioned, the fund's been existent since 2008, and they've only made four grants over, just over $1 million. Currently, there's still $5 million sitting in that, in that fund. We recognize it's a large request, but at the same time, I think that this request and the money that's just been sitting out there could be put, it's an excellent investment for the city to put it into an airport project where we're trying to see, you know, increased on the, on the commercial side as well as the general aviation side, invested into a company and into a spot that's publicly, you know, owned by, operated by a public subdivision and operated by one of your biggest stapled employers in town. So closing thoughts, just a couple of thoughts. Now the construction project, and like I said earlier, is almost $40 million. And that's just the building cost. It'll take another $3 to $5 million to tool it up and to furnish it. We anticipate 60 jobs with an average salary of more than $70,000. Our ask is less than half of the required infrastructure improvements and less than 10% of our project costs. Technically, the granting language of the fast-forward funds, this whole project would qualify for the fast-forward funds. YEL and the Airport Authority has committed $500,000 to assist historically. Like I said, they've committed significantly more for ramp space and other infrastructure improvements. But unfortunately, that timing didn't work out for them this year to help us out on a greater level. Required stormwater improvements make up almost $900,000, which are not in compliance with city code. This would be required whether we did the expansion or not. Since we have submitted the FFF application, costs have gone up significantly. The $500,000 committed from the Airport Authority would not even cover the increased costs from the time we submitted this application to now. We are using a general contractor from Colorado. They've built seven or eight hangars for us throughout the country. We did use one, we did go out to bid to another local contractor, and we have sent out to bid to 338 local subcontractors. Almost the entire subcontractor pool will be local. I think an important fact is, we are a tenant. We don't own any of these assets. All these improvements will benefit the Airport Authority by adding new buildings on their property, increasing their rent revenues. In turn, this assists Airport Authority and their services to Lincoln and to our Lincoln citizens. Our customers come from all over the world. We estimate that greater than 90% of our revenue earned comes from outside the state of Nebraska. We're bringing in builders from, from all over the world here, and they stay at our hotels, and they eat our restaurants, and they buy our goods and services. So finally, we appreciate your time. Again, sincerely appreciate your time. This has been one that we've worked on for a long time, and it's been great to see the council step up and come out and see what we got going on. And so thank you for your support and your consideration.
Are there any questions for Kramer Lyons, Councilman Beckius?
Yes. Hi. Good afternoon. Thank you for appearing today. Surely appreciate it. You referenced this all throughout your, your talk today, whether we're talking about political subdivisions, real property improvements, lease, rent, what have you. Could you dumb it down a little bit for, 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 for the sake of discussion here? Can you explain a little bit about Duncan's relationship with the Lincoln Airport Authority, City of Lincoln, what you build out there, who owns what you build? Can you just give us a general overview so people understand?
Yeah, we're a tenant. We're, just like a tenant improvement project, where you go into a building and want to make a bunch of changes before you start opening your business. You know, you want to redo the inside so it looks like whatever your business you want it to look like. We pay rent, you know, we rent it from them after we expend the capital. So typically, these types of deals, and this, this is true all over, you know, airports all over the country. You, the, us, the business, will, will pay to build the hangar, the infrastructure. Then there's a, a period where you pay very low rent or no rent. And then after that period, the rent rate gets adjusted to fair market value. That period in Lincoln, I will say, is the shortest of any of the major places we operate. It's 20 to 25 years. Other places, it's up to 50 years. And so where you have no, you know, basically, you amortize that cost out over an amount of time, so $40 million. Here's what would fair market rent be today, whatever it is, that, you know, $10,000 a month or $20,000 a month. And then you amortize that over a certain period of time. Whenever that clock runs out, that you've eaten up all that $40 million, you know, phantom rent, you start over and you actually pay real money rent again at that point in time. The Airport Authority, you know, I'm not exactly sure the relationship between the city and the Airport Authority, but the city supports the airport. And so, you know, if we increase their revenues by renting more property from them, that has to help.
Sure, sure. Maybe you made it more complicated, actually.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this directly.
Yeah.
Duncan uses the hangar, builds the hangar, uses the hangar.
Yeah.
One day Duncan says, "I don't need this hangar anymore."
Yep.
What happens to the hangar?
Yeah, we walk away from it all.
And who owns the hangar when that's done?
Airport Authority.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Councilwoman Raybold?
First of all, I want to say thank you very much for coming down. I do appreciate that. And I do have one correction for Councilwoman Ward. Every single one of us up here today is enthusiastic, and we support this project. We know of all the contributions Duncan, Duncan Aviation, Duncan Family has made to our community over all these years. So we are certainly very, very appreciative of that, and we do support this project. I do have a number of questions, though. So first of all, tell me about the bid process and where you are in the bid process, and have you awarded a contract?
We are currently negotiating the construction agreements with Tectonic, the, the general contractor from, the design builder from Colorado. We, the bid, the bids that we took on a general contractor's side, the local contractor was almost $3 million more. And a lot of that came from general conditions and, and management fee. As far as the subcontractors, I believe that it's, it's been out for bid. I think some of those maybe have been awarded, but maybe not all of those. I'm not exactly sure where the subcontractor portions of that are. I do know that we're trying to break ground in a month, you know, within the next month as soon as the ground thaws. So I think, I think some of the site work and the parking lot infrastructure that you'll see here has been locked up as far as the, the, some of the other stuff that's going in the main hangar. I, I'm not sure that that's all been finalized.
So I think for the viewing public, you have made that commitment to stay in Lincoln, Nebraska and not go to Battle Creek.
Correct.
We're very appreciative of that. So you're saying that maybe some of the contracts are signed with the subcontractors or?
Well, I mean, I don't know if they're signed, but they've been, you know, a confirmation that that's who we're going to go with, you know, to be able to, because we have, we just, late last week, we got some more estimate cost estimates, which is what I'm referencing, the costs have gone up. And so I think some of those have been solidified since we've submitted this process for sure.
And I think one important step, do you have a signed lease agreement with the Lincoln Airport Authority?
So that's on the agenda for this, so all of this stuff up here, yes. This parking lot expansion here, so hold on, I'll wait till this pops up. Okay, so all of this here, yes, we do. And that's under current lease with us. This highlighted yellow parking structure is 167,000 square feet, and that is on the agenda of the Airport Authority Board on the 24th. We don't anticipate any reason that would not go through.
So when you calculate the rent going forward, do you offset it from the, the contributions that you're going to be getting from the fast-forward funds or from Lincoln Airport Authority? And to extrapolate, when, when are you, when is Lincoln Airport Authority projected to start receiving rent payments?
So the first, your first question, do we account for that when we start, when we, when we calculate how long the rent-free period is?
Correct.
It's a good question and one I don't know the answer to. But when we usually start paying rent, I think in Lincoln, our last several leases have been 25 years. In other states, like I said, they're closer to 50 years. So I would guess, I would imagine this one's another 25-year lease, but I don't know that for sure.
So, but you haven't extrapolated when that rent payment starts, or you have, or did you say it starts after about 25 years? I didn't quite understand.
Yeah, so I don't know of a certain date. So the, we're still waiting on a lease from the Airport Authority to, an amendment to our existing lease to add this space. But I, I, what I can tell you is that typically, once we do a capital expenditure like this, we have 25 years where we don't pay rent or pay a low rent until, and then at year 26, we start paying full market rent.
And then you, you had mentioned, and Councilwoman Ward had mentioned drainage funding from Lincoln Airport Authority. Are you anticipating receiving, or have you solicited additional funding from any other subdivision?
No, the only other funding that we possibly could get is some state money for adding new employees. But I, again, I'm not sure where that status is at either. I think, I can't remember what that program is called.
Imagine Nebraska?
Imagine Nebraska, maybe.
So you anticipate that Lincoln Airport Authority at a maximum would contribute $500,000 specifically for the drainage?
Yeah, there were discussions with them about maybe adding some additional funds if they could get matching funds from the city to do some road construction on North Park Road. I don't know if that's what you're referencing, Councilman Raybold, but no, I don't. And if, I'm not aware of anything else beyond the $500,000 from the, from the Airport, Airport Authority.
And can you tell us a little bit about compliance? How, how will the city, or maybe that might be a question for city law, but perhaps you know the answer. So for the fast-forward funds, how do you document that you've achieved the employment quota or that is, is required of you? And that's one question. And then the second question is, how do you calculate? Because there's some conflicting language in the resolution. Is it the wage? Does that, does that wage include benefits? So, so tell us how you interpret that, and then we can also ask law to come up and clarify when the time comes.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind hearing from law as well on this, but I guess I, I would like to hear from, I'd like to hear from law on what they're going to say.
Councilwoman Ward?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Lyons. I think we clarified that with the new language in item, actually, for C., and I would like, yes, pleased to hear from Mr. C., if you could come forward.
Question for him.
You want to wait till we?
Okay.
This is, whoops. This is to answer Councilwoman Raybold's question on accountability as the positions are created, they're reported. And for C., thank you, Mr. C.
Yeah, Tim C., Assistant to the Attorney, 555 South 10th Street. Assistant to the Attorney, I need to say that. I often mess that up for some reason.
It's okay.
Compliance, first of all, with respect to checking records and employee numbers, that is not done through the law department. In the past, that has been done through the mayor's office. Just that, that's where that has been done at. With respect to the language, it was pointed out to me prior to council today that there is one portion that, throughout the resolution, there is an amendment that's been drafted, I believe shared with the council, that where it's tried to be clarified that we are talking about the average, the median wage in the county. There is one remaining reference that speaks to compensation package. So that probably should be clarified, but I believe it's intended that we are talking about 120% of median county, median wage in Lancaster County.
May I ask, I have one more question after this one, but it's, so when you're referencing wage, are you including benefits to that wage threshold or excluding benefits to the wage?
I believe that excludes benefits. I believe that's why the reference to compensation package creates the confusion.
Okay.
So I believe when we say wage, we are talking only about wage or salary, however you, a per hour.
Question on this.
Amount, not a benefits package.
Thank you very much. I just have one more question of legal counsel, not our legal counsel.
Well, I'll tell you what. Councilman McGinnis has a question about this thing in particular.
Oh, okay.
So I'll give him an opportunity to ask a question about this topic that you've raised.
Yeah, thank you for coming up. I saw that in there earlier, and I was just wondering, what is 120% of county median wages? Do we know?
I don't know that off the top of my head. That is a federal statistic I don't keep in, in my, top of my head. I believe it's in the neighborhood of between $45,000 and $55,000. So add 100, so 120% of that gets to 60, I mean, roughly.
So are we talking in here, it also talked about a 70 compensation package of 70,000 or more, should that be a wage package?
That, that was what I, wasn't, that was what I think we should do to clarify that, Councilman.
So 70% would be considerably higher than the 120, probably, at this point?
That was our understanding, that 70% is much higher than, than that metric.
You were talking 70,000.
70,000 would be higher than 120%, I believe, yes.
But in here, doesn't it say the lesser of?
It does say that.
So they could, so they could do, come in with 45, 50,000 and not the 70 and still meet this.
Right. Or if the median wage went to 70,000, and 120% of that is obviously significantly higher, then you would, 70,000 would be your threshold.
84,000, right. So, so the lesser of?
The lesser of, yes.
So they, if median wage at 120% was 70,000, then the target should be 84, but they can get by by paying 70.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilwoman Ward, I believe, has a comment on that.
I'm really getting it.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify or make sure I understand then, does it, maybe we're not looking at the same line, Councilwoman McGinnis, but I think equals or exceeds the lesser of. Did you see the amendment change on page three, line two, such new employees equals or exceeds the lesser of? So.
So it's a lesser of the two wages. It's the lowest wage they have to meet.
Equals or exceeds.
It's not the 70,000. So 120% of the county was.
And why it.
Only 40,000 they could get by by only having a 40,000 dollar.
120% of 40,000.
Okay, yeah. 52,000 then.
And while I have the microphone, I also wanted to just, that's okay, point out, item C, which says the fast-forward funds will be dispersed annually based upon job creation over a three-year period, with another change before you today, if you haven't seen, that says, as such positions are created and filled, and proof of such is provided to the city, in which case, Mr. C., explain, in the past, that has gone to the mayor's office, not to the Law Department. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I would, I would, Councilwoman Raybold, I would imagine that we would file some sort of quarterly report or something like that with the mayor's office, that here's, we added 39 positions this, these three months, 90 positions these three, you know, over the quarter, and the average wage was 74,000 or something like that.
Thank you, I just have one more.
Well, let's, Councilman McGinnis, I think, still has another question about this specific topic, so let's recognize Councilman McGinnis. And then after Councilman McGinnis, we'll go to Councilwoman Washington.
It says it would be an average, so let's say median income was 60,000, 120% was 60,000, so the average wage, so this could be someone making 500,000 dollars would be part of that. They bring in some exec to, for this position, then the average could be, certainly, all kinds of fun ways to play with this. That's why I'd like to see a little bit more clarification on how this is going. I know their intent, and I know what their intent is, if we could just get to that point.
Any other comments?
No.
Or questions? Okay, Councilwoman Washington, and then we'll do Councilman Beckius.
I don't have a question per se, but I, just because this conversation right now has been very entertaining, I just, that's okay, I went to the U.S. Census Bureau, and the median house, the median individual income in Lincoln is 57,746, for Lancaster County it's 60,527. Somebody who can run math in their head.
72.
So it's a little higher than even that, 70, so.
But so you could.
7746.
70.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Washington, Councilwoman Ward, did you have a response to that? Okay, we'll go to Councilman Beckius, you're good?
Yep.
Any other conversation about compensation?
I do have another one.
Okay.
Okay, so help me understand, when does the clock start on the hiring process? You just shared with us, you've hired 25 employees, and that's great, but when, when does that clock start on individuals you consider dedicated to this new facility, this new project? How will we know?
I'm reading the resolution, if I remember right, there was, I suppose, once we start, once we break ground on this project, we could, we could start the clock on people hired, but, because we're already hiring people with anticipation that we need technicians for this job. A lot of times, we'll hire technicians that are just coming out of college, and before they're really able to work on airplanes by themselves, they need a couple of years of experience. We'd hire 80 technicians right now if we could, if we could find them, and like I said earlier, we're having some luck. That, I guess that'd be something I'd be open to discussion with, with the mayor's office, city attorney's office, to figure out when that appropriate date is, but I would say, my proposal would be as soon as, you know, we break ground and start the project would make sense, but I'm open to something else.
I guess, is that something that we could clarify in the resolution?
We can clarify any number of things, yes, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you. I did have one more question, not related to compensation.
Okay, well, let's find out if anyone else has any questions related to compensation. Councilman McGinnis?
No.
Beckius?
Nope.
Washington? Schob, Ward, okay, perfect.
Okay.
So both of you stay there. Okay, Councilwoman Raybold, you are recognized for your question.
Okay, thank you. You know, typically, when we see projects requesting funding from the city, it's tax-increment financing. So fast-forward funds is something new, certainly to me, and I've been in this position for almost eight years, and shame on me, I wasn't really aware of it, and my first meeting was out at Duncan on February 17th, so thank you. I learned an awful lot, learned a lot more about fast-forward funds. But tell us a little bit more about the, like Duncan Aviation, it wasn't tax-increment financing, you didn't come forward for tax-increment financing for this project, but correct me if I'm right or wrong on this, airport properties, you do not pay any property taxes?
That's correct. The airport does not, we lease it from them, but they don't pay any property tax, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, and, which means Duncan doesn't pay any property taxes either.
Correct, yeah, we, yeah.
Thank you, that cleared up that one for me, thank you.
Councilman McGinnis?
Uh, just a quick question, you say that 45,000 square feet is the hangar space?
46,000 square feet, yeah.
46, and then the rest of it is office?
Uh, no, it's backshops. So backshops, something I learned, I came to Duncan about a year ago, backshops, so when you pull stuff off the airplane, seats, landing gear, avionics computers, they all need refurbished, refinished, replaced, and so we have interior cabinet shop, veneer shop, landing gear shop, engine shop, those are all backspace shops, support shops, what we call them. There will be several of those in this new hangar, along with storage. These, just the engine covers on these things will take up more space than this table, so we have to have big spaces to put all these parts, and with these bigger airplanes, parts are bigger. So storage and backshops is what the extra space will be for.
Okay. Any further questions from Mr. Kramer Lyons? Okay, hang tight, because you have an opportunity to provide a rebuttal. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. C.? Perfect, thanks so much. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Mr. Carlson?
Good afternoon, Council Chair, Council members, I'm John Carlson, I work in Mayor Gaylor Barrett's office, and I'm here today in support of the proposition you have on the table in front of you today. As you know, as has been said today, fast-forward fund was created over 10 years ago to support economic development and infrastructure projects that increase economic activity and promote good-paying jobs here in the community. It's been a successful tool to help business expansion and job creation over the past decade. As has been pointed out, the Duncan Aviation proposal fits the fast-forward fund criteria, both in terms of the new economic activity that they're going to pull from outside Lancaster County, and creating jobs that by resolution pay in excess of 120% of the median wage for the county, which is what the resolution calls for, the resolution that created the fund. As has been pointed out, Duncan is a tech company, involved in aircraft maintenance and modification. We believe the expansion of their operations on Airport Authority land will generate economic activity, not only during the project construction with good-paying jobs, but also the ongoing economic benefits associated with those good jobs that they offer within the aerospace industry. I want to make sure that I point out how much we appreciate the leadership of Councilperson Ward, working with Duncan, the city departments, all of the other council members, to work hard to come together and craft a proposal that's in front of us today. I know that took a lot of time and effort, but it's an important thing to do in terms of trying to continue to bolster our economy and the good jobs here in town. So I don't need to waste a bunch of your time, I just wanted to make sure we came down to say we're pleased to support the use of fast-forward funds in partnership with this expansion, and we look forward to more decades of community benefit with the associated private investment that we've seen from Duncan, and the good jobs that they continue to bring to our community.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlson? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. Is there anyone else I would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Kramer Lyons, you provided the opportunity to provide a rebuttal without one statement if you'd like.
No. Thank you, the mayor talks.
Okay, Councilwoman Ward, would you like to close on the public hearing for your resolution?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank my colleagues for their time and their due diligence as well, and it has been a long time coming to today, and certainly appreciate all the time and effort everyone has put into it. Thank you, John Carlson from the mayor's office for being here and supporting it, and for being the genesis of this project and working closely with Duncan. That's been really important to our community, and it's, and going forward, so thank you, Mr. Carlson. And Tim C., Assistant Attorney, thank you so much. This isn't an easy project to understand. Fast-forward funds are not necessarily easy to understand, but I can't emphasize enough the importance of responding in the way I think that the council has decided to respond because of the use of these funds, and that they have been there for four years, not used, and so I really appreciate all the time and effort that's been put into it, and for Duncan, you know, they're just so key to our community, and they've done so much for Lincoln, and I know Lincoln has responded as well, but in a time like this, you know, we all are supporting our airport and the Lincoln Airport Authority, and wanting to make sure that our airport thrives, and this is one more way that if we support Duncan Aviation, then we can make sure that, that's one more way we can support our airport and recover from the pandemic of the last two years, so thank you for all that. I guess just one more point of clarification for Councilwoman Raybold, I just want to go back to my notes, because it gave me a little bit of pause, but what I did say was, five of the seven of us support this request. I do know that all seven of us certainly support Duncan, but five of us have supported this request throughout this process, so just to, so you understand that. So with that, Mr. Chair, I really appreciate all the time and effort everyone put into this today. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much, Councilwoman Ward. So on item 4C, we had an opening, we had a public hearing, we had the closing of the public hearing, let's go ahead and move on.
We can now vote on these items. Item 4A is miscellaneous 22001, application of the Urban Development Director to declare the Bishop Heights Shopping Center Environments Redevelopment Area as lighted and standard on the property generally located at 27th Street and Highway 2, introduced by Ward.
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Now I'd like to offer a motion to amend too, to pull back the claim of Olga Lennox from the denied claim pending further investigation.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion? Councilwoman Washington?
I'd like to bring forward a motion to amend on this proposal. If, would that be all right?
Yeah.
Second?
Okay, just a second, let me read the motion. I'd like to move to amend this, this claim report by pulling back two items for further investigation or until that claimant could be present. That was my motion.
Second?
Hang on one second, so I need clarification, could we split those two items up into, yeah, so that way the?
Each person.
Each person.
Let me do that then, okay, I was just trying to up the patience, so first, I'm going to move that we pulled back the claim of Nancy Black from the list of denied claims, she wasn't able to be present today.
Okay, moved.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion on pulling back Ms. Nancy Black's claim? Okay, seeing none, may we please do a motion on the, a motion to amend from Councilwoman Washington.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Now I'd like to offer a motion to amend too, to pull back the claim of Olga Lennox from the denied claim pending further investigation.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Okay, now back to the main motion, any further discussion on the main motion? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll on the main motion?
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion, I'm sorry, motion carried 7-0.
Before we go into 4C, just to remind folks what we talked about earlier, we'll do Councilwoman Ward's substitute motion first, deal with that item of business, and then if other council members have motions that they would like to amend, we'll do so after we do the substitute ordinance to make sure that we keep this clean and clinical, for lack of a better term.
Clinical, I like that, clinical.
Nice.
Like there's a half of, potential half of, I wish.
Item 4C is approving fast-forward funds for the construction of a maintenance and modification hangar at Duncan Aviation, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius, Councilwoman Ward, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to move to amend bill number 22R-90 by substituting attachment A.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius, any discussion? Councilwoman Raybold, is it related to the substitute ordinance?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. I do approve the substitute language, because I know when the resolution first came out, it was a little bit unclear, because the, the fast-forward funds, as everyone knows, are specifically directed to public infrastructure improvements that really benefit the city of Lincoln, and so I want to thank Law Department very much, and Tim C. for cleaning up that language, working with Duncan, and working with Councilwoman Ward. I do want to talk about the resolution and why I do support it, and for, really for clarification, every single one of us supports the request, we just don't all agree on the amount. So I wanted to make sure that everybody had a little better understanding of the fast-forward funds. Like I said, after my first meeting, I learned a lot more about fast-forward funds and how they've been used in the past, and I know this ask from Duncan is a big one, is a big one. It's actually 5.5 times the highest ask that we have received. So for the viewing public, so they have an understanding of some of the other projects that we have approved in the past. Huddle Skywalk, they had an installation of a skywalk bridge that connects to the public parking lot, and that was $600,000, and that was in 2018. In 2016, Zoetus did an installation of a right-turn lane, and that was for $60,800. In January of 2018, Air Park Industrial Road had requested road construction and installation of water and wastewater utilities. In 2018, that was $207,297, so yes, and that was also involving the airport. In March of 2011, Duncan Aviation had requested the fast-forward funds on relocation of the water main, and that was for $150,000.
Councilwoman Raybold, I was reminded that our conversation needs to be about the substitute ordinance, if you have a topic about the main motion, we'll have to do the substitute ordinance first, and then you'll be recognized to speak after that about the full project.
Well, I'm speaking in support of the substitute resolution, so I have a few more comments I'd like to make. Okay, so for those events, so we can look at the funds for fast-forward, they have gone towards the airport, and so that's why I'm also supportive of this, but the funding for the airport, that the airport has received to date has been $357,297, which is still substantially more than the other entities that have been received, and with, if we do authorize this full amount of the funding for $3.35 million, that will have put funding that has gone from the fast-forward funds of $6 million, roughly about 60% of that will be going towards improvements in the airport, which, you know, it's something that my colleagues do support, and I do support the previous fast-forward funds that are stated in the substitute resolution. That's a lot of funds that have already been spent towards the airport, and so that is only one of the concerns that I have raised in support of that. The other comments I can save, but I do have some more comments on the awarding of the fast-forward funds.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the substitute ordinance introduced by Councilwoman Ward? Councilman McGinnis?
Yes, and I agree, I think the substitute resolution is a lot better than the first one that came out, and it's a lot cleaner, explains some more, but I still think it needs to go a little farther, because I still believe there's, there's some confusion in here about the compensation package, is it the greater than, or less than, lesser than, and the first draft resolution- In the first draft resolution that was brought forward, it was a little more clear, but they kept talking about total compensation package of 70,000 or more. I think what we need to do is, is just clean this one up and, and make it a little more simple and go back to the 120% of median income and, and/or 70,000, whichever is the greater than, would be better than lesser than, but I'm sure Duncan wouldn't like that one. But at least go back in and make it a little more clear because that's what the, the fast-forward fund was established, was at 120% of then median wages. And so I think we need to take out all talk of total compensation and, and the other part that still brings me, has a little bit of angst for me would be the, the proof and how do they prove going forward and what kind of mechanism is going to go forward and how they do it. I know with the Imagine Act, you have to submit every year as part of your, probably your state income tax. You have to submit what you're doing and that, so I'd like to have some proof that that money is, is being used. And I think we can clean those simple things up here pretty quickly. If, I'd rather not do it in trying to amend this. I would rather do that if we could have time to amend it over, over a week.
Okay, I see your hand. Is there any other discussion on the substitute ordinance, Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Councilman McGinnis's point, I think that's, that's reasonable. I, I think that that might be something, a reporting mechanism that if in fact it goes to the mayor's office, that would be a discussion that we should put in the fast-forward criteria and perhaps not in this amendment.
And represent it back to this?
Right. Well, yeah, I think, and that's probably more a way to move forward today, and I guess, Mr. Carlson, if you want to respond to that. If not, that's fine, but since that's where the reporting goes, I would, I would suggest we do that versus trying to amend this today. That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
If, if that's agreeable to Mr. Carlson and others. Thank you. Did you want to come forward? Okay. I don't want to put you on the spot, but, but that would be a suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just specific to that question, as I look at 4B within the resolution, there, the resolution requires them to provide verification satisfactory to the city. So that means we, we can use the process that we use. We can craft that process and we can outline it for any particular project the way we want to outline it. So we have that flexibility to do exactly what you're saying. You can pass this resolution language, and that still gives us the flexibility to account for it in any way that we need to account for it.
Great, great. Thank you very much for that input. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Chairman. I think that, that the only item that I would, would want to make certain we were in agreement on was wage compensation. I don't know if we want to modify, amend and write it today, right now, or if we can take another day or two. I realize that means a week, but I just, I think we want to make certain that that is correct. But I, we might be able to do that today.
You go. Mr. Beckius, did you have a?
I did not.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone had a chance to respond first. Councilwoman Raybold?
Yes, I, I mean, I do think we should clarify that, and perhaps if we took a break, we could get clarifying language from legal that we could add as an amendment to the substitute amendment. That's a possibility.
I, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but if there's an amendment that you would like to make, we'll have to make it after we make, after we vote this one in, because I don't want to get stuck in motion after motion after motion.
Correct. I, I understood that, Chairman, but I, I do want to point out that in the, I do want to point out that what John Carlson had sent to us, any changes to the fast-forward fund, including any changes to the purposes of the fund or the criteria by which fund money is distributed, require city council approval, and that process follows the normal resolution process. So I do think if we're going to be dealing with a substitute amendment, we will need to make some amendments that clarify the compensation package that we have been discussing, and I don't know if that is an amendment after we vote on this, that we can correct probably after a break, plus there will be other amendments proposed as well. And I don't know if the process should be requesting a delay of just one week to get this cleared up so that everybody has a chance to, to see it, or if you want to proceed forward and do the corrections after a break and do it right from the dais.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone, for your indulgence. Here's what I would suggest, that any changes made to the fast-forward procedures that we do need to make as a council be done separately. They could be done as soon as next week. I will not support a delay to this because we've been at this for many months, and every delay is an increase in costs. And, and I was going to introduce this in February, as many of you know, and we needed more time in many departments, including our great legal law department, to, to get this right, and we've gotten it right. And I would like to call for a vote on this, and then we can change as a council our criteria in the fast-forward funds and make them applicable to the resolution today and deal with that at another, next week's meeting if need be, as a separate resolution or, or whatever that legal mechanism needs to be. But I will not support a delay. I don't know that we need a break. If you want to offer other amendments, that's fine. I won't support any type of delay on this, however, today. So that's what I would like to offer, Mr. Chair, and, and to move forward with this vote.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is you'd like to call a vote?
I would, thank you very much.
Okay, as I looked it up, call a vote means that we then move into a roll call vote?
To call the vote.
To call the vote.
To end discussion.
Okay, so the motion that we have on the table now is, do we move forward with calling the vote? That was introduced by Councilwoman Ward. I do not believe that that requires a second because it's in the procedure, so the motion on the table now is, do we move forward with calling the vote? May we, is there any discussion on that? No.
I don't, I, correct me, I don't think you have to have a vote on calling the vote. It does, do you? Roberts rules, I don't believe, you can go right to the vote. We don't have to have a vote on calling.
Oh, I'm great with going right to the vote.
Right.
That's correct. I think you simply just go straight to the vote at this point.
Go right to the vote.
Okay, perfect, all right.
So, okay. You can end discussion by just saying I called for a vote.
Called the question. Called the question.
Essentially calling the question.
And then, and then nobody else can speak.
Then that ends the discussion.
But you have to vote on calling the question?
No.
No.
I don't believe so.
Disagree with you on that.
That's fair.
I think, thank you. Roberts rules can.
Well, I guess, do we?
There are council rules.
Mr. Christie, anything else?
Do you have those, Mr. Christie?
That's a good question.
I will tell you that the, if the council rules do not speak to a specific matter, then we refer to the Roberts rules. Rule 3.14, however, compelling a roll call vote may be what you are referring to. Any member may compel the clerk to call a roll vote on any matter before the council for decision when the chair has not requested such vote.
What is that? Pardon me?
Any member may compel the clerk to call a roll vote on any matter before the council for decision when the chair has not requested such vote.
We're not calling a roll vote. We're calling, to call the question to stop discussion.
That's the only.
Roll call vote is a different item.
Fair enough. So the only, so then there is no other council rule that speaks to, I don't believe, calling the?
Motion to call the question.
I don't believe that there is a council rule that speaks to calling the question, which means that we would refer to Roberts rules.
Okay, could you say what, could you look up and see what are Roberts?
I believe Mr. C. correctly stated the Roberts rule, that it does not require a second and the chair decides.
Okay, so it does not require a second and then it immediately stops all discussion?
If it passes.
If it passes, so we still have to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm hearing B. said is that we had a motion to call the question, we have to then vote on the motion to call the question. If that passes, then we vote on the substitute ordinance?
You are on the, yeah, motion to.
Okay, okay, so we had a call of the question, let's do a roll call vote on calling the question.
I have a question.
No, because we had a call of the question, we have to do?
Point of order, then.
We will.
The point of order, Chair.
Councilwoman Raybold, you're not recognized. I ask that you please respect that. How I am interpreting this and how I believe that this has been explained is, once there's been a call to, a call, a calling of the question, we have to stop all debate, take a vote on the, on calling the question. If you have any questions after that or whatnot, then you have to do it after we do the roll call vote of calling the question. So as I'm interpreting the rules, as I believe it's been explained, Councilwoman Ward introduced a call the question, which means we have to stop debate, and now we have to take a roll call vote on ending debate.
But why did you allow Councilman, next to me, to, to ask a point of order question?
We did not have clarity on how that rule was working, and I believe that we have been given sufficient counsel on it.
May I just get a clarification, please? It ends all debate just on the substitute amendment. Is that correct?
Yes.
So then we have to vote on the substitute amendment? After?
Well, there's a, well, there's a motion to, right now, I think it's a motion to amend, which is a substitute amendment, right? So I think your question is, is it going to end the debate on the motion to amend? Is that what you're asking me? Because you're calling the question to vote on the motion to amend.
Correct.
Yes.
But it doesn't necessarily end all the debate on any additional amendments?
Well, I think the council procedure that's always been followed, vote on the motion to amend, then you vote on the main motion, which requires a motion, a second, and.
So we have a, the calling of the question is to end debate. So the vote that we have in front of us is a roll call vote on if we should end debate, day, debate. If you vote yes, you are voting to end debate on the substitute ordinance. If you're voting no, then you're voting to not end debate on the substitute ordinance.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Yes.
So let's please do a roll call vote on calling of the question to end debate on the substitute ordinance.
I have one question. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that I'm notating this correctly, so there is no need for this motion, correct? On calling the question, a second?
No.
I don't need a second on this.
No.
Okay, I will call the vote. Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1.
So?
Point of clarification? According to Roberts Rules of Order, it requires a second to call the question.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
If it would, if it makes, if it makes folks feel better, we'll have a second.
No, I mean, I'm fine.
No, I want to make sure that we do this correctly, so if it makes people feel better, we'll redo it.
I would offer the second.
Reintended, seconded by Councilman Beckius. May we please recall the vote with Councilwoman Ward's introduction and Councilman Beckius seconding it, just to make sure that we are doing everything correctly.
I agree, we need to.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1.
So debate is ending on the substitute ordinance, and now we have to do a roll call vote on Councilwoman Ward's substitute ordinance. May we please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Okay, so I see your hand, Councilwoman Raybold. Thank you for being super eager, I appreciate it. Figurous debate is always good.
Simply notating.
So the substitute ordinance has passed, and so now we're back to the main motion. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Councilwoman Raybold?
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. I would like to make a motion to amend number two, and it references in different parts of this resolution, reducing the request from 3.35 million and replacing it with 1.5 million.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Raybold, seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion on Councilwoman Raybold's motion to amend? Councilwoman Raybold?
Thank you. I, I did want to have some comments again to reemphasize that we all support the request by evidence of my vote and my confidence in Duncan Aviation and the good that they do and the great economic driver that they are for our community. However, again, you heard me state that this is the largest ask ever of the $6 million fast-forward funds. It is the largest ask ever, combined with the other additional asks from the Lincoln Airport Authority. They are an incredible amount. And if you look at geographically, we can see that 100% of the requests that have come forward before the city council have all been in the northwest quadrant. I have to tell you, I have no idea, no idea whatsoever, why there haven't been any other interest from other companies in the city of Lincoln. This is relatively easy, free money that helps jumpstart a lot of economic development projects. I have no idea why it hasn't been promoted more through the Lincoln Economic Development Corporation or other entities, and I, I think it's, it's a phenomenal fund, and I certainly hope that my council colleagues talked about, we're looking at the criteria again, and I think that's absolutely the right direction we need to do. We know that we have received so many requests for funding from the CARES Act, from ARPA, you name it, from businesses that have been impacted in one way or the other. We know that businesses want to locate in Lincoln. They want to continue to grow and expand their existing operations. I think if, if more business entities out there were aware, I think we would have had a lot more requests coming before this body for us to consider. And I think I am really supportive of taking another look at the criteria because I know in the city of Lincoln, our number one priority is affordable housing. And just think of how $1 million or $2 million would help accelerate us to that priority of creating more workforce housing. We know the Chamber of Commerce has said very clearly that how do we attract and retain jobs? And they said affordable housing, but workforce housing. That's how we can attract additional folks to our community. So I am really thrilled, and I thank my colleagues for their willingness to, to reconsider the criteria because the fast-forward funds could be included for affordable housing, for affordable housing, grant funding to landlords for rehabilitation of the urban core rentals to preserve and protect our rental properties, so that they would be given incentives. I know urban development is looking at giving incentives to help those landlords fix up their properties. And additional funding to the Community Development Resources, which is a, a new entity that we have funded to help speed up programming, to do that, find ways of funding that gap on affordable housing projects. So I want to say to my colleagues, I recognize that this is a worthy request, but I can assure you that there are so many other worthy projects out there that we haven't heard from and we don't know about. But it's certainly my intention, working with the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce and their economic development, uh, entities and, uh, task force that they have, to make sure that this message is out there. I would love to be able to say to them, we have more funds available to those entities that want to do all the great things that Duncan has done. And so I'd like to be able to say, we have more than 1.5 million left in our kitty, and that's why I'm asking my colleagues to please consider reducing the request from Duncan. I understand that there's a possibility that additional funds may be forthcoming from the Lincoln Airport Authority, but I would certainly suggest that 1.5 million is certainly an appropriate one, uh, considering the, the public infrastructure improvements that are being requested of us. So I ask my colleagues to please consider the reduction.
Council, Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilwoman Raybold, for offering that. Um, I will be opposing the 1.5 million amendment, and here's why. That amount seems random to me, whereas the 3.35, which we learned today, is not less than half, it's really now closer to $4 million, half of the public expense for Duncan expansion. So to just throw out 1.5 million doesn't seem, it seems random to me, and we're this far. And actually, there'll be 1.7 million left, um, with the approval at 3.35. And given that, over the last 14 years, we've only awarded 1 point million total, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me whatsoever to award at the 3.35 million dollar level. And, um, just as a reminder, Duncan could have qualified for all of our, um, funds had we been so, um, if we had wanted to award that, of course, we wouldn't, but they did meet all that criteria. I totally support, um, changing our criteria, um, moving forward to put in the, the reporting mechanisms that we talked about today. I think that's appropriate. And tightening that up, I think we've all learned a lot today about the process. But just for now, I, I am opposing the 1.5 million reduction, and, um, I would encourage and ask my colleagues who have supported at the higher level to continue to do so. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, um, I got a lot of questions on this and always have with working on Airport Authority ground, and it's kind of a hybrid. Two things, I know Duncan has been an FBO, has to be on the airport. They don't have a choice. Um, if they had a choice to move, I, I think they would have. If they could have owned their own facilities, I believe they would have by now, um, and would have built their own. Um, but they don't have a choice with these hangars. You can't build a, a big hangar for planes someplace south of O Street or someplace. We're out, but there's no airport. But, um, so that, that kind of restricts a lot of what they have to do and where they have to go. The, that really bothers me the most is that this just doesn't make a business sense that, um, the city will be putting in 3.3 million into a project that they get no return on. Um, in the past, you know, it, if this was a, a, a good business, it'd be the landlord that would be giving the money to Duncan, because they're the ones that are going to get the money at the end. Um, when their rent goes up at year 25, and they start recouping all that money and start paying, and start getting rent based off of the fair market value, then the Airport Authority will get all the money. So I, what I had proposed early on, but nobody seemed to agree, that we would give it to the Airport Authority to loan or to put into their lease agreement. Um, but that didn't come across. So that would have been, that would have caused Duncan to pay a little higher rent, because they're getting more tenant improvement dollars. But if spread out over 25 years, it really wouldn't have been a big deal in that. So that's why I just, it, it doesn't make a, I guess, a business sense if I was the city and I was giving money away. The numbers just don't match up with a 3.35 number.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I will first, um, I think this is a really good project for Lincoln. It's certainly a good project for Duncan. I'm glad the jobs are staying in Lincoln. My concern has, has only been that, um, it appeared at one point as if this project was taking money from the city, fast forward, and potentially getting money from the Lincoln Airport Authority for the same work. And I wanted to make certain that the stormwater issues that were being resolved by this project were only, that it's not a double dipping issue. And so, um, I had a chance to talk to Duncan's legal counsel before the meeting and was assured that, um, those dollars are not being used twice for one thing. Um, and so with that, I'm gonna, um, fully support this project. And yes, I would love it if the fast forward fund was greater in size and that we had more money to give. Um, but I'm hoping that we can be creative and find ways to increase the fast forward account in other ways, so that we can offer these kinds of benefits to other businesses here in Lincoln.
Councilman Beckius?
Yes, it, it seems like we're talking about the project as a whole now, um, as opposed to the issue before us. Um, so I'll go ahead and just speak now. Um, money, money sitting idle in a bank account for 14 years does not drive economic development. Um, and unfortunately, that has been the case with the fast forward fund for the last 14 years, for the vast majority of it. Um, we now have someone who is coming to us, says, we're not keeping jobs, we're adding jobs, we're adding good paying jobs. Here's this fund that no one has used for 14 years, or haven't, hasn't used the majority of it for 14 years. We want to use it to add more jobs to our city. And by the way, the improvements that we're going to add are going to be the property of the same taxpayers of the jurisdiction of which is granting the dollars. How is this not a win? How is this not a win? Um, so I will be voting in full support of Duncan using these funds, because hey, in the last 14 years, they've been sitting idle. Now, some of my council members have said, my fellow peers have said, we would be looking, we, we would be open to looking at replenishing those funds. I'm happy to have those discussions too. That being said, in the last 14 years, people have not claimed this, these dollars. Um, but at the end of the day, I have an employer sitting here right now that said, I want to add 70 new jobs to our community. No one's using these funds. No one has used the vast majority of them for 14 years. Let's move ahead and do this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Councilwoman Raybold?
Well, I just want to clarify. Thank you, Councilman Beckius, but, you know, in the last four years, we've had over $800,000 of projects granted in the last four years. And in the last six years, we've had, again, closer to 900,000. So I, I appreciate your comments. I agree. We should be using this money, and we should be using it for other projects. I know that Duncan was kind enough to give us a, a spreadsheet showing the breakout of some of the funding. And so I am a little concerned about the Airport Authority and the funds that they had speculated that they would provide for the drainage. And I know on the East Drainage, it specifically calls out for $443,707. So I, I assure you that the number is not arbitrary. Um, I know Councilman McGinnis and myself, I think we have over 64 years in the commercial construction industry side of it. And so basically, I went back and reflected on those things that were the public infrastructure improvements, um, as well as counting in the funds that they would definitely be receiving. I, it's my understanding that they will be receiving from the Lincoln Airport Authority that could be up to a million dollars. And so for that reason, that's how I got the, the number that I got. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to clarify both of those concerns that were raised by my colleagues. I do look forward to using the fast forward funds to help a lot of other businesses, and I would hope people would support, um, reducing the amount to 1.5. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Councilwoman Raybold's motion to lower the amount? Okay, seeing none, let's do a roll call vote on Councilwoman Raybold's motion to lower the amount to 1.5 million.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
Ward?
No.
Show?
No.
Beckius?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
Motion loss, two to five.
Okay, now back to the main motion. Any discussion on the main motion, Councilwoman, or Councilman McGinnis?
How we want to try to clean this up? By making a motion for, just make it 120% of wages? Uh, Mr. C, could you come up?
Are you trying to do another motion to amend?
That's what I'm wondering, if we want a motion to amend?
Those are always risky from the dais, but, um.
They are. Do you think we can do this now?
Let me, let me try.
Okay.
Would you like us to take a break?
Already, I think there are two, I think there are two, so I think there are two spots where it talks about total compensation package. And if you have the substitute resolution in front of you, I'm, I'm working from a clean version. Um, so if the, if the pagination lines are off just a little bit, that may explain it. But I am looking at page one, line 24, there's a reference to total annual compensation package. If I was, if I were to give a motion, as I understand it, that Councilman McGinnis is considering, I think we would strike the ter, the words total annual compensation package in, on page one, line 24, and replace them with the word wage.
Okay.
I believe then there is a second reference to that same term on page three, line six. The, you see the words total compensation packages. I would propose to strike again, page three, line six, total compensation packages.
For all new employees.
For all new employees, you would propose to strike that as well, Councilman McGinnis, or?
Well, what I was, in that the, yeah, I was going to try to strike average total compensation, and that it says a completion of the project, and the, hold next line, average total compensation package for all new employees equalling, equals, equalling, equals or exceeds the lesser of, so, and the, and then leave in 120% of the average wage. Of the county, right? Is that what you're thinking?
Read it off to me as you would have, as you would have it read then, and I'll try to articulate it more clearly.
Okay, let's go back up. Let's see, the years following the completion of the project, and that the, um, I guess we would need to insert wages, would be 120% of the county average wage or 100, or 70,000 per year. Do we want to leave 70,000 per year in there, or we just want to keep it 120 of county wages?
Um, I, that's.
Would, would you, I mean, okay, it's mine, I guess. Let's, let's just make it 120% of county wages. As a county average wage, and strike or 70,000 per year, unless we wanted to really get into weeds and.
I just thought we could switch total compensation to wage and make it wage in both places, in all places.
And just leave it, leave the 70 and the?
Yeah, I, I, because the word was compensation or wage. I thought that's what we wanted to do.
Councilwoman Ward, you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Councilwoman Washington, I would agree with that, and Councilman McGinnis, I don't have any issue with changing that wording, but I would like to check in with Mr. Lyons. If you don't mind, could I call him to the?
Absolutely.
Podium, please, and get your read on what we're trying to do?
Yeah, Duncan is okay with, uh, wages being at 120% or the 70,000, the lesser of, um, and removing the total compensation. I think, I agree that that makes it messy, and I, I, we're okay with adding wages.
Very good. Thank you.
One more question for you. Would you be okay if we took out the word average? That you would be creating 60 jobs of 120%. So the average would be 120%, because like.
So say we added 200 jobs, we'd have to have at least 60 of them that meant, that were, that, hey.
60 of them, yeah.
Uh, that's totally different than what I thought. Like, uh, can, can I take a minute?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to think, you're right. You'd be giving away, it'd be the same as if you were adding somebody at a million.
Yeah, I would not support that.
I don't think I would support.
Yeah, I don't.
And we won't bring it up.
Yeah, I don't think I would either, yeah. But.
Okay.
I think we need to leave average in, sorry.
Okay, so we're still working on an amendment?
Right, so let's get back to that amendment. Um, so what I hear, we are still talking about line, or page one, line 24, striking total annual compensation package and, and replacing it with the term wage, so that it will read, as a result of this, this expansion will have an average wage of 70,000 or more per employee.
Okay.
And then on, again, on page three, line six of the substitute, which is before, which has been approved by this council and is, is, what's under consideration at this point. Again, page three, line six, we would strike total compensation packages and replace it with the term wage, so that the sentence, the latter half of that sentence would read and, and that the average wage for all such new employees equals or exceeds the lesser of 120% of the county average wage or $70,000 per year. Does that accurately reflect, Councilman McGinnis, what's your motion?
That would be a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table.
That is motion, need a second.
Second?
Seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion on Councilman McGinnis's motion to amend? Okay, seeing no discussion on Councilman McGinnis's motion to amend, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. C.
Thank you, Mr. C.
Don't go away.
Smile. Overs.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Okay, now we're back to the main motion. Councilwoman Raybold?
I'd like to introduce one more motion to amend from the dais. Um, and I'm not sure where our legal would advise to go, but I would like a caveat that reads, should Duncan receive additional funding from Lincoln Airport Authority for the infrastructure improvements for this project, that they, those monies will be deducted and offset from the fast forward funds they have requested.
I'll second that for discussion.
Moved by Councilwoman Raybold, seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Councilwoman Raybold, do you want to open up on your motion to amend?
So I wanted to clarify that, um, Councilwoman Washington had raised a concern about the Lincoln Airport Authority, probably, maybe, we don't know, giving additional funds for the public infrastructure improvements. We don't know. But my request is that if that is the case, then that would be reduced from the fast forward funds of 3.35 million that the city is offering for those infrastructure improvements.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would oppose this amendment, because in fact, we do know, um, we were, Mr. Lyons addressed that in his testimony, and we do know that that is not the case. He did, um, address that, and I talked to members of the Lincoln Airport Authority as well last weekend, and Mr. Min Chow, who also assured me that was not the case. And I, I don't, at some point, you know, you just, um, believe in, in our local leaders and know that if that were the case, they would tell us, and they've told us. And I, I just won't support deducting from, um, something we're awarding to a major company in Lincoln based on good faith. And he's, they've demonstrated that to us, and, um, there's, I just don't think there's any more discussion unless the council would like to hear once more from Mr. Lyons, that they in fact, um, are not taking any, any funds or don't anticipate it right now, um, from the Lincoln Airport Authority, because that has come up, and it's a different year at the airport and for the Airport Authority because of the pandemic. And we know as a council, we're struggling to also help the Lincoln Airport, um, keep going. And so I think it's pretty evident, um, and it should be evident to all of us that that's not the case. And I don't know that we want to start that as a precedence or as a precursor as we award other fast forward funds. I mean, just philosophically, to add caveats down the road that say, and if you get this grant, then we're going to back that out of what we gave you in fast forward funds. I don't think that's good business, and it's something I won't support. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Councilwoman Washington?
Um, I, I want to speak, just because it seems like my comments, um, are what generating this amendment. And I just wanted to say that I did have some questions about whether or not we were funding the same item with two different sets of public funds. And the conversation that I had, um, prior to this meeting, so opening today, gave me assurance that we're not, we may in fact be. that we're not, we may in fact be adding money into infrastructure. We're both adding money into infrastructure if the airport comes forward and does that. But that the cost of infrastructure is such that we are not completely duplicate, we're not duplicating each other's efforts. The 500,000 that the airport might put into this is more than covered by what we are not covering in our infrastructure support in the fast-forward.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Raybold?
I would just like to have legal counsel for Duncan come up and said, and assure us that you would reject any funding from Lincoln Airport Authority for infrastructure improvements to this project on top of what you're getting for fast-forward funds.
Point of order.
Councilwoman Ward, you're recognized.
I don't think it's appropriate to ask a business to reject incoming funds. I, you know, here's the thing. We are fighting for airport money, and they also received in the meantime a $750,000 grant, but we didn't go back and ask them to back that out of the money we're asking for, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Raybold. So I don't know that we want to set a precedence by asking a major employer in Lincoln to not accept additional money. I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay, I will recognize that point of order, and we'll move on.
So, okay, you're saying she can't ask him?
The chair rules, I believe.
Correct, that, I found that that is a improper question. Councilwoman Raybold, are there any other discussion you'd like to have?
I, I have just one last comment, that there is a strong possibility that this project, as worthy as I think it is, will be receiving up to $4 million from municipal authorities here. And I just want to make sure that, like I have stated before, that we spread these funds to other worthy projects throughout our city. And I, I thank Duncan, and, and I thank you very much for coming before us today.
All right, any further discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, seeing none, did you want to close on your motion to amend?
No.
Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll on the motion to amend?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
Ward?
Point of clarification, please. Oh, are we voting on Councilman McGinnis's?
Yes.
I kind of forgot.
Voting just compensation motion.
Thank you, yes.
I thought we already voted on that.
No.
We did not? Yes, we did.
This is Councilman McGinnis's.
I thought we voted on that.
I thought we voted on it.
But what are we voting on?
Yes, we voted on it because this was a new amendment.
Brand-new motion to amend.
Yeah.
What is the vote, the vote is on the original motion?
No. No.
What is this vote on?
Her motion to amend.
I can clarify. No. I can clarify. I can clarify. We voted on Councilman McGinnis's vote already on that motion to amend the substitute resolution that was already adopted, changing the verbiage and striking language to include wages. We're now on our motion to amend number two, that was brought first by Raybold and seconded by McGinnis, and that is to change and decrease the 3.35 to the 1.5. That is what we're voting on now.
The, Madam Clerk?
No.
No.
That already said.
This is
If you don't, if you don't mind, Tim C., Assistant City Attorney. I believe what is before the council, let me, let me just go through the procedure as I think we have done so far. We have had a, the main motion was on the table. The, there was a motion to amend to adopt a substitute resolution. That has been approved. We then had a motion to amend number two, which was to reduce the amount to 1.1, 1.5 million dollars. That lost two to five, I believe. After that, we had a motion from the dais, from Councilman McGinnis, to change the terms of total compensation to wages in two, two different parts of the resolution. That was approved by a vote, I believe of seven to zero. We are now on a next motion to amend from Councilwoman Raybold, made from the dais. I cannot repeat it directly, but having to do with adding a requirement to the resolution that if additional funding were received from the airport authority, that that would be, to taken away from, subtracted from, deducted from the fast-forward fund grant that is made in this resolution. So is that the understanding of the council at this point?
Yes.
That matches up with my notes.
After checking, yes. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks.
Okay, so let's redo the roll call vote, since there's no more discussion on Councilwoman Raybold's motion to amend.
Beckyus?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Shob?
No.
Washington?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Bowers?
No.
Okay, now we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Okay, any? Councilwoman Raybold?
I'll just say briefly, I'm going to support this because I know it will be good for our city. I would love to have seen a more reasonable amount brought forward by Duncan, but I understand the good that you will do, and I'm going to hold you to it. So thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, Councilwoman Ward, would you like to close?
I'm good, thank you. Call the vote.
All right, let's go ahead and do the roll call vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Let me take a break.
Yeah, we're going to take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back at 5:45. We're in recess.
All right, everyone, you're good to go?
Yes.
All right, Council's now back in session.
Okay, we are now on Section 5, Public Hearing Ordinance's Second Reading and Related Resolutions. I'll be calling Item 5A, Approving the Lease Agreement Between the City and Truck Equipment Service Company for the Use in Conjunction with Their Private Business of the Manufacturer's Sale and Servicing of Trucks, Trailers, and Related Equipment.
Good evening. Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. The item that is before the council this evening is renewal of a lease with an adjoining property owner that the city has had for 25 years. The piece of property is located on the east side of I-180, north of Oak Creek. It's leased to the adjoining property owner, Truck Equipment Service Company, and they are a local business that manufactures trailers that are used for large trailers, heavy trailers that are used for agricultural use primarily. This agreement was originally, or this lease agreement was originally established in February of 1997 for a five-year period, and then it had an option for six additional five-year terms. So this renewal will extend until 20, pardon me, 2027, and there will be one remaining opportunity for renewal after this agreement. The area of the lease is about 6.23 acres in size. The amount of lease is $12,089.20 per year, and the provision of the original lease provided for a rate increase every five years based on CPI with a cap of 8%. And so this lease amount is going up 8%. The last renewal provided for landscape screening along the front edge of I-180. That has been planted, and we continue to work to get that established. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening.
Are there any questions for Director Johnson?
No.
Okay. Oh, Councilwoman Raybold.
I noticed in the lease agreement, they have property damage of only up to $100,000 for insurance.
That may be a typo, because I think the standard lease, the standard insurance rate for the city is a million dollars.
A million dollars. Okay, so I just, I, I saw that. I think of trucks. I think of diesel. I think of spills, you know, and I just wanted to make sure that we have some protection. Property damage on page three in the middle, that it is a million for that. And I'm assuming that as the landlord, we check and verify that they have safe storage practices for any fuel.
We'll check that, because, yeah, that seems inconsistent to me with regular city insurance provisions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes, thank you, Director Johnson. I was around when this lease first came up.
Yep.
And they wanted to buy the site really bad. And was there a reason we couldn't sell it? Was it part of a public funds project, or a federal funds project, or?
My understanding is that there was review at the time, and that this was established. I was not here yet. But there was a determination at that time that the city could not sell the property, but that we could lease it. This was part, my understanding is that this was part of an overall property that was acquired by the city, and then I-180 extended through that. So that's how we ended up with this sort of remnant piece off to the side. But if I remember correctly, that the, the, the terms of, under which this piece of property was acquired does not allow the city to sell it.
Kind of what I remembered on that a little bit. If you could check on that, too, just to make sure, because if it isn't, and we're going to continue to lease it for 25 years, why not sell it? But I do see they pay property tax on it.
They do, yeah. The way this agreement is structured is that they pay the city the rent agreement, and just so you know, that rent agreement, based on a decision made at the last renewal, goes to the Parks Foundation. It goes into a fund that provides scholarships for economically disadvantaged youth to participate in recreation programming. And there is a provision in there that if the property is subject to property tax, they pay those property taxes in addition to the lease amount.
Any further questions for Director Johnson? Seeing none. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I will have an answer to that question before the council votes next week.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Item 5B, Amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 10.02.
I have a question for Lynn on the next one. Just clarification. Yeah.
Sorry. Item 5B is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 10.02.055 Bicycle Lane to Include Use by Other Transportation Devices on Bicycle Lanes. Amending Section 10.02.125 Electric Foot Scooter to Define an Electric Foot Scooter as a transportation device rather than a motor vehicle that is propelled by an electric motor or in combination with the application of human power. Amending Section 10.14.050 Use of Restricted Areas Adjacent to Curb and Changing Course to Permit Some Transportation Devices in the area adjacent to curb if otherwise permitted by the Lincoln Municipal Code. Amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic to Add Chapter 10.49 Entitled Electric Foot Scooters to Provide That Persons Operating an Electric Foot Scooter Shall Abide by the Provisions Established for Bicycle Riders and Repealing Sections 10.02.055, 10.02.125, and 10.14.050 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as here to existing.
Hi, I'm Dan Carpenter. Thanks for having us. From Lincoln Transportation Utilities, I'm the manager of the Traffic Engineering Section. Just, just wanted to briefly go over what this proposed ordinance is changing. The ordinance changes here as a result for Items 5B and 5C are a result of recommendations pushed forward by the Scooter Pilot Program Report, which has been completed and is publicly available on our website at traffic.linkin NE.gov. As part of those recommendations, we received input from multiple city departments, including law, LPD, as well as some outside partners, specifically UNL regarding performance of the pilot, as well as recommendations for the program in the future. I'll try and keep this brief, but again, we had multiple recommendations that came out of the pilot report that we would implement prior to any permanent program moving forward. If you have any further questions on those, please let me know.
Are there any questions at this time? Councilwoman Raybold?
Yes, and, sorry Lynn, I wanted you to be here to address, it says, the scooters can use other transportation devices on bicycle lanes. And I just want a clarification. That doesn't mean it's the trails. It's just the designated bicycle lanes.
Yep.
I don't want people to think, oh, I'm going to ride my scooter on all these great trails, but...
Yep, and as part of the ordinance, it is specifically excluded from multi-use trails and shared-use paths.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Lynn. Okay.
Any further questions at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you.
All that time for that.
Thanks for sticking around.
Thanks, guys.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on Item 5B? Anyone else that would like to speak on Item 5B? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to Item 5C.
I'll call Item 5C, Amending Title 5 of the Lincoln Municipal Code Relating to Licenses and Regulations by Adding Chapter 5.52 to Lincoln Municipal Code Entitled Shared Mobility Devices.
Dan Carpenter, LTU Traffic Engineering. Again, this one is to create an ordinance to manage the, the shared, shared micro-mobility devices, i.e. the scooter devices.
Any further questions?
Let's do this thing.
Councilwoman Raybold?
This is just, maybe not necessarily related to this specific thing, but in your earlier comments, you had mentioned you went out to some individuals to get their input and feedback. I know I've heard from retailers that are in the Haymarket area that were not really crazy about the scooters, particularly for the fact that they just dropped them on the sidewalks. Did you, when you did your assessment and evaluation from the users, did you also reach out to other individuals to get their input on how they felt about the scooters?
Sure. Roberto Partita, Transportation Planner with Lincoln Transportation Utilities. So you are correct in that the user survey was specific to e-scooter users. However, we did have during the, the length of the pilot, businesses, property owners, what have you, were able to contact the city by email, phone, uplink, and we were happy to answer any questions, comments, concerns that may be brought up. One specific instance through those channels, the Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation reached out to us and expressed concerns with improperly parked e-scooters in the Haymarket. From that, we then participated in a, in a meeting with them and heard their concerns and, and came up with some possible solutions, one of those being the implementation of designated scooter parking locations in the Haymarket. And a few months after that, we did hear back that improperly parked e-scooters, the concerns around that did decrease. So concerns around improperly parked e-scooters, whether it be the downtown or what have you. A current recommendation of ours that we do plan to implement is identifying and implementing designated e-scooter parking locations.
And Roberto, on each one of the scooters, is it listed the phone number of the company that's operating? So if a retailer sees a scooter improperly parked right on the sidewalk, they can contact that number, correct? That's a requirement that we have them have that phone number listed on individual scooters?
That, that is correct. And in some instances, if the business owner were to reach directly out to myself, I was able to quickly relay that information to either e-scooter company.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Thanks so much. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to move on.
That concludes our public hearing section for Section 5. We can move on to our ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 6A is Change of Zone 20036 Application of Chan's Hand Shaw to Change from AG Agriculture District to H3 Highway Commercial District and Property Generally Located at 8230 South 91st Street, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Councilman McGinnis, you're recognized.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, like to turn on my mic. I'd like to make a motion to delay this for one week.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold.
And the reason is, we're working out a couple little details that we want to maybe get codified, I guess is one way to put it.
That's a good word.
In there that would maybe make this more palatable to a few of our members.
Any further discussion on Councilman McGinnis's motion to delay?
Are we allowed to ask if the applicant has a question about the delay?
Sure.
Is the applicant okay with this? Okay.
Cool. All right, seeing no further discussion, let's call the roll on Councilman McGinnis's motion to delay.
Are we, are we delaying for?
A and B.
A and B, but for how long?
For one week. We do not have public hearing. This is third reading tonight.
Okay. Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Thank you for waiting around all night. You, too, Steve.
Item 6.
And Abby.
Item 6B, Approving a Conditional Annexation and Zoning Agreement Between the City and Chan's Hand Shaw Property Generally Located at 8230 South 91st Street, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Councilman McGinnis, you're recognized.
Oh, no, I don't have any.
I mean, did you want to delay this for one week?
Delay one week.
Second.
By Councilman McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman, Councilman Beckius.
Thank you.
Doesn't matter.
As long as he gets delayed one week.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Okay.
Item 6C is amending the pay schedules for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter A by creating the classification of Epidemiologist III, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 6D is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter N by creating the classification of Utility Equipment Operator III, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 6E, Amending Pay Schedule for Employee Group Whose Classifications Are Assigned to the Pay Range Which Is Prefixed by A by Changing the Pay Range Class 5022 Solid Waste Operations Supervisor from A09 to A14, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 6F is amending the employee group whose classifications are assigned to pay range which is prefixed by the letter A to change the title of District Supervisor to Street Manager Superintendent, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 6G is amending the employee group whose classifications are assigned to pay range which is prefixed by the letter W to change the title of Information Services Manager to Chief Information Officer, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
I'm sorry. Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 6H is amending the employee group whose classifications are assigned to pay range which is prefixed by the letter A to change the title of Public Health Epidemiologist to Public Health Epidemiologist and Assistant Public Health Epidemiologist to Public Health Epidemiologist I, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shobe?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 6I is amending Section 10.46.110 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to vending from trucks on city residential streets providing that the trucks are not hindering or obstructing traffic in repealing Sections 10.46.110 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as heretofore existing, introduced by Shobe. I would, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ward, seconded by Councilman Beckius. Councilwoman Ward, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move to delay the vote on this item for one week to March 21st, 2022, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing, seeing none, may please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybald?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shobe?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Section 7, Resolutions First Readings are Items 7A through 7D. Ordinances First Reading and Related Resolutions are Items 8A through 8G. Our pending list are Items 9A and 9B. And pending list, date uncertain, is Items 10A.
Today is a public comment session. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda nor plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. For the month of March, open microphone sessions will be held today and on March 28th. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council?
It is sitting.
It is.
Maybe dot myself there for a minute.
Seeing no one coming forward to speak, I move adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
Raybald?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shobe?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right, stand adjourned.
Everybody can go home.